Could I have your attention, please? We just re- we will re- adjourn from our closed session. We've got a couple of items. I'll ask Mr. Rudolph to make any comments.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The council's in closed session this evening on conference of legal counsel. Anticipated litigation, one case, and public employee performance evaluation, city manager. There's no reportable action regarding either item tonight.
Thank you. We will now start our regular city council meeting at seven oh three. If I could have the roll call, please.
Councilmembers Payne?
Here.
Claire?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Meredith?
Here.
Shelton?
Here.
I'd like all of you to please rise for a moment of silence and then remain standing for the flag. Flag allegiance, please. And Barbara, could I ask you to lead us into the pledge, please?
I will. Please join me in the pledge.
Let's say it.
Oh.
Prayer first.
Sorry.
Silence, moment of silence first.
Now shall we do it? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have the video statement, please.
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast with that interruption on Metro Cable fourteen, the government affairs channel, on the Comcast and Shore West cable system. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel fourteen and will also be webcast at www.saxmetrocable.tv this Friday, June nineteenth, at one P.M. and Saturday, June twentieth, at nine A.M. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at www.cigalt.ca.us. A VHS copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
We will now take the agenda approval additions and or any deletions, councilmen.
I'd like to pull D nine.
D nine?
For discretion.
Okay. Any other items, Mr. Mayor?
We'd like to pull D seven.
D seven?
Just a reminder of clarification.
Okay.
Assessment point of clarification. On, Andrew, on your item, under the word recap.
Yep.
What, are you just gonna recap what happened, what you recommended, what's the extent of?
Just what I recommended.
Full list again?
Just detail what I recommended at the budget hearing.
Okay. I guess I would just ask, um, again, our Assistant City Manager, I've been uncomfortable with what he's sort of suffered at, the publicness of some of that. And as you might be aware, it turned out the local TV station, I guess, reported we approved the recommendations as opposed to not. I've already had to tell two people who asked me, so I hear you're trying to fire your Assistant City Manager, that, no, that's not what we were doing. So.
That's why I put it on the agenda, to go over what was reported on the news and what actually took place, the budget hearing.
Okay. Well, I just asked maybe think about leaving that porch and out so we don't subject the poor gentleman to anything further.
Well, as I told you at the budget hearing, Councilman Claire, it's discussion of eliminating a position, not a person. It's not a personnel matter or an evaluation of an employee's performance. It's the discussion of eliminating a position.
Okay. You've heard my request.
You can.
I have.
Do what you want. Thank you.
I would ask our city attorney, is there any caution or any parameters regarding this issue?
No, there's.
On the recap?
There's no legal guidance I want to provide on that item.
Okay. So we have the two items only. Uh, public comment?
Under Government Code, Section five four nine five four point three, members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public or on any agenda item before or during consideration of the item. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward your completed speaker sheet to the city clerk prior to addressing the council. We request that you state whether you live within the Galt city limits or the county area. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. LeAnn McFadden?
Good evening.
Good morning.
Local mayor, council. Um, I'm here tonight on behalf of the Board of Directors for South County Services. Uh, recently, we were informed by Sacramento County that we will be cutting our budget allocation by one half, from three hundred thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand. This is due strictly to county budget problems. There are currently many agencies that are being completely cut altogether. We're fortunate that the county values our services and is helping as much as they can with us. This does, however, seriously affect our ability to assist the citizens of Galt with daily emergency food distribution, monthly brown bag distribution for seniors, monthly commodities distribution, senior medical transport, rent mortgage utility assistance, gas vouchers, and other services. With the downturn in the economy and loss of jobs in the area, we find ourselves serving a broader spectrum of people. There are noticeably a larger percentage of seniors and middle class needing our help. We have been speaking with Supervisor Natoli and have recently met with him regarding this budget issue. He is assisting us where he can from a county perspective. And he's also looking at other funding opportunities available. We are also looking at other founding, funding opportunities available through granters and other foundations. The reality is that we need some more help now. Uh, tonight, I'm formally requesting that council direct staff to research how to provide South County services with possibly some emergency financial help through the city. Not only would these funds allow us to move forward, but would also demonstrate to the county that Galt values our safety net programs. Uh, please let us, please know that we fully understand that there are reporting responsibilities that come with receiving financial responsibilities. We currently report to SETA, to DHA, to FEMA, and to Area Four Agency on Aging, and all of whom, whose portions of our program are in compliance. So we're an open book. Um, Mary Lou's here tonight to answer any questions, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, LeAnn. LeAnn, I do have a question for you. When did you get notice that they were pulling these funds from you?
Totally, the amount was last Friday.
About recent?
Friday?
Just yet.
All right. We knew we were having some funds pulled, but.
They've cut you back in the past, but they've never cut out the funding completely before, have they?
No. No, and actually, they've cut out half, but, um, we are looking at other grants. Dawn is continuing to work with this and, and, um, I was hoping maybe we could get some help from the city.
And LeAnn, what is the shortage of funds going to affect the, uh, the services that you're able to provide?
I'm gonna let Mary Lou talk to you on all that.
Yeah. Mary Lou, would you come up, please?
Good evening.
Evening.
Um, we would, our grant is gonna be cut in half and, and in a nutshell, I'll try to explain how grants work. We have different grants that cover different areas. The grant that we get from DHA is basically administrative costs and all the costs of running and operation, you know, from rent to telephone to, um, utilities, any of that stuff. The other grants that we have, and we have just gotten some stimulus grants from FEMA in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars and SETA in the amount of twenty-one thousand dollars, which is strictly for helping with, uh, the utilities, rental assistance, food assistance, um, and the gas and, uh, bus vouchers. The problem is if we don't have an administration and we don't have a building to distribute the monies, it's going to have to go back. So it's kind of a lose-lose situation with what's happening with us. And so, um, if we cut our grants in half, we'd be down to about two employees who really couldn't field all of the additional, uh, work that workload that comes with having to, um, use our stimulus monies. The, um, amount of paperwork you have to do for any of this is dazzling sometimes. It takes about an hour or so for each person that comes in requesting assistance from us because we have to have so much information, you know, where they live, who they are. So what we really need is to be able to help distribute these funds. Going down half is going to make it really hard to do.
What would you say that the economy has done to your, your organization, the, the needs in the community?
Uh, applying for the stimulus money, we, we have to write grants for that. And because we are seeing, this is a depressed area. We have a lot of layoffs and, you know, we're going through a lot of foreclosures. We're seeing a lot of middle class and working class and working poor people that really need our assistance now. And the, the stimulus monies that we got, we actually bumped it up for, there's no, uh, limit on your income or what you need. The other thing is with our monies before, we, we had limited dollar amounts. We would, we could only give like a hundred dollars to help with utilities. We bumped that up to at least two hundred and fifty dollars because the money's just not going that far. People are getting farther and farther behind. So I'd say because, based on the grants that we've applied for and received, we've probably gone up twofold at least with people requesting emergency services.
I was gonna cover this under communications tonight, and I know Liz is looking it up now. But in the Sacramento Bee this morning, there was an article about how Galt is one of the twenty worst cities when it comes to unemployment and our increased unemployment rate in the community in the last year. So I know that that's put a tremendous burden on the work that you do. What troubles me about what seems to be going on with the county and the way that they're allocating their funding and trying to make up their budget deficit, it seems that they're targeting programs that they know cities within the county are going to step in and help fund. And I think that's extremely disappointing. I think the work that you do with your organization is vital to the well-being of members of our community and all of Sacramento County. So I, I'm in favor of staff looking into this and finding out how we can help keep your doors open and keep making sure that you're able to provide aid to the community.
Yeah, just one little note on the budget and the county of Sacramento. Uh, we're at least fortunate enough that they're giving us some money. There are so many programs on the chopping block that have to do with seniors, uh, the homeless, um, just so many programs that are almost out there. And so the, the other thing of the burden on that is it's gonna put it back on organizations like us that have just a little bit to work with. As I told the, uh, county, we, the people that we service are probably just one step away from being homeless if we can't at least continue to keep them in their homes and keep them with supplemental food, you know, gas vouchers so they can at least get to work. So yes, it's, it's very disappointing. It's very stressful right now.
And I agree with you, Andrew. I had written down here while you were, guys were talking about directing staff to work with Mary Lou and whoever's on her board, Ted, Jason. I mean, you have two council members that fell that way, and I'm sure the rest of them, I don't mean to cut you guys off, but...
What we would have to do is meet with them and find out where it's at and that we would have to agenda something and ring it back for your consideration.
Okay.
You know, I do wanna say something. You know, this is part of the problem. I'm afraid we're starting to face it. Much like the county, the state's doing the same thing. Everybody's looking for revenue and they're, and they're reaching as deep and as far as they have to to get it. And unfortunately, when they do these type, type of cuts, uh, it's the people who are paying for it. So, um, it really concerns me, especially now that you've been cut this deep. I'm worried about, you know, next year. Um, and you know, I totally support this, you know, anything we can do for the community, the seniors, the unemployed, et cetera. Uh, I just hope we don't see any further cuts in other areas. Uh, I just don't know how we're gonna be able to, uh, uh, keep this, uh, support going on an ongoing basis uh, as communities are further burdened with, you know, the additional cost of, uh, of, of, the cost being passed on to us. Not to be long-winded or anything. But I, I think you guys do an excellent job, and I, and I totally support what you do.
Thank you very much. And to your question, that does buy us some time to continue to, to work for grants. We have a wonderful person working with us to, to obtain grants and, and, uh, it gives us, it also buys, again, some time for us to continue to look for further funding.
And it, and what really concerned me is just having gotten notice on Friday and knowing that you're gonna need funding in just a very short period of time, it really puts you at a big disadvantage. I mean, you guys have always been proactive about getting funding for your programs. You're always out there hustling, uh, doing, uh, special events, whatever it takes. And I, I really feel bad for you because this really could have been dropped in your lap on such a short notice.
It's nothing.
It's, yeah, it, it isn't fair, so, you know, I, I support you on this, and I hope it goes well.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I also want to thank you and your board, and I know some other board members in the audience, for hanging in there. It's been a tough time and getting worse, unfortunately. But I, to the grants, I know that many times, and I know Jeannie, who's gonna probably update us on their grant, one of the first questions you're asked is, well, what's the local buy-in? Uh, and I think it'll be beneficial for the city to be one of those people that they can say is already supporting in their efforts, so hopefully they can find other funds. And, um, and I know how little you do and how much volunteer you do and your staff and your board and other people in the community. And having been on the board and having been, been the treasurer of this organization in the past, these people can stretch a dollar, a dime, further than most people can imagine. So we do what we can to help you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ted.
It would be all right, what I would recommend is, is you allow us to find something to bridge, uh, for the one fiscal year. See if we can do that and then, and then relook at it at that time. That'll give them a year to try and get their feet on the ground, figure out what's going on, and then see what they can do.
Okay. You want?
I agree.
Thank you. Uh, let's see. We had two, uh...
John Slaughterback. Sorry.
Uh, John Slaughterback, eleven C.D. Galt. I just have a couple of items tonight, not much. Uh, I wanted to comment about, uh, Andrew's assessment of the economy for next year. I agree with you on your assessment of the economy next year. I can't, I don't see that home development's gonna come back that fast. The conditions out at the Twin Cities Overpass isn't right for development. Uh, the, once the runaround gets installed, maybe there'll be, it'll improve, but right now... And that, and, and the, uh, uh, the people have to qualify for loans now more so. So people that's got money to qualify for loans are gonna be more picky. The best spot in, in Galt that I can see for development is off the cost world there where there's some development going on. Uh, people that's got, can qualify, that, that looks to me like an area that might develop. It's close to the shopping center. They can go across the bridge and hit, uh, Liberty Road, Overpass, so everything's... Conditions there look, look favorable for development. But over here, it doesn't look good, not until you get the Overpass in on C Street and these runarounds you're talking about. So I agree with you that the economy isn't looking good. It's not gonna look good for some time, I don't feel. So your assessment of the economy, I believe, is correct. I do question, though, why you put so much on your plate at one time. You had to have known that this was gonna be rejected. Uh, it looked like me, anyway, because I could see where nobody's gonna approve of it. So I thought, well, how could you put all that on, on your plate at one time? Uh, Ted even suggested something in a, in a roundabout way. He said if it was me, I would cut, uh, salaries three percent across the board. And nobody picked up on that. But I thought that was a good suggestion. Uh, the other thing I had was, uh, last council meeting, the, uh, council, on the consent counter, approved the transfer in four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. And I could not understand how you couldn't even ask a question and, and make such a switch so easy. So I put a records request in, and I did meet with Greg and, uh, discuss the matter and, uh, come to some understanding there. I still have some problems that I'm looking into, but I come to a little better understanding with, with, uh, Greg's, uh, information he gave me. But to me, it didn't make sense to me how council could pass something like that on the, on the consent calendar and not say a word about it to the public or anything. This came out of the fifteen fund, the Citizens of Galt Surfer Fund. And, and how you could do that so easily without making an explanation, I couldn't understand. And I still have some problems that I'm trying to research a little bit, but, uh, Greg did help me on it some, and so, but maybe somebody would comment on that, why, how you could pass something like that without making more comments on it.
Thank you.
Al Baldwin?
Al Baldwin, a concerned citizen of Galt, a community of character. And I'm telling you, don't get tired of that because it's still popping up. We got character all over the place. We, we've got a, a farmer's market on Sunday that is doing fantastic. I drove by it after church. Uh, they've got more tents out there now than they did the last time. They got fresh fruit, uh, you can just, and they might give you free samples. You know, they let us taste some cherries where we're out there, so I don't know. I can't promise you'll get them. But, uh, nevertheless, you go out there and, uh, if you're hungry, it doesn't mean that you have to eat what you buy there right away. You can go cross the street and have breakfast at Gary's Deli even. You can go up to Save Mart and shop if you want to. You can do all kinds of things, but, you know, that farmer's market is just a, a beautiful sight. When you walk up, it's Premier West Bank, it's, uh, on C Street and Lincoln Way right on the corner, and you can't miss it. And it's, uh, it's just so nice to see smiling people out there, kids playing, uh, fresh produce, and everybody's there with a smile. So you gotta get out there on Sundays. I mean, I think it's around eight or nine o'clock to about one o'clock. And it's, uh, just perfect, easy to get to. Just take Central Galt Turnoff and then, uh, go down C Street, and you can't miss it. So I, I would suggest going there and trying it out. Uh, one thing that's really nice that I noticed when I was going by there again, where the great, uh, character flags up and down Lincoln Way, right in front of Gary's Deli, the farmer's market, the real estate office, uh, all the businesses there. It was just beautiful to watch up and look up those things there and, and just say, yeah, you know, this is a town of character. And I wanna thank Jason for doing this, Assistant City Manager. He's done an excellent job. He spearheaded this thing for getting his flags, and he's done a wonderful job. Galt's got so many things going for him right now. If you want a house, this is the place to come. I mean, we've got so many houses out there that are priced so low, it's ridiculous compared to Elk Grove and all these other places. You gotta check it out. The houses, they're being cleaned up, too. A lot of these other houses I've seen, and you know me, I like to take pictures. Uh, I took pictures of some of the houses, they weren't too good. But now Galt's starting to really get bright, and it's looking really, really sharp. The prices are right, the people are great, shopping's wonderful. We're getting new businesses slowly, but we're getting them compared to other cities that are just filing bankruptcy, with Dela and some others. So this is the growing city, slow, but it's growing, and it's getting better every day. And if you're thinking the economy's going down, uh, it may be all around us. But you know, we're the bright star in the center of all this, it's lighting everybody up. You just gotta look for it. And you'd be surprised how close you are if you're not living in Galt, that you can come to Galt and check it out. There's developers here that are waiting for you, there's homes that are foreclosed that are great bargains. Uh, I mean, they were four hundred thousand, now you can get them for two hundred or less. I, it's just wonderful. So check it out. Uh, the council is, is really on your side when you come into Galt. They try and help you in every way, you saw it maybe a little bit now. And they're more than happy to answer any question. The Chamber of Commerce is so friendly, I can't believe it. You walk in there and they smile at you, they give you a map, they say, hey, what can we help you with? You know, none of this, yeah, well, you know, the town's not growing. We're growing, slowly, but we're growing. And, and it's like a diamond in the rough. So get a piece of it now because in a few years, this thing's gonna get skyrocket again, and you're gonna be surprised. But you were told now. Get down here. We want you. Thank you.
Thanks, Al. Thank you. Is he on our payroll?
That's all they have.
That's all they have.
Stickers? Okay. Information consent calendar. Uh, Liz, you could read those, please?
I would. Okay, we have nine items. Number one, approval of the minutes of the special and regular meetings of June second and the special meeting of June eighth. Number two, approval of the City of Galt warrants. Number three, introduction, adoption, excuse me, of ordinance two thousand nine dash eight amending the district zoning map. Number four, adoption of ordinance two thousand nine dash zero nine, amending the district zoning map. Number five, approval of the treasurer's report for the period ending April two thousand nine. Number six, Central Galt interchange funding, new measure A. Number seven, landscape and lighting district, number seven was pulled for discussion, lighting and landscape districts engineer report, intention to levy and collect assessments for fiscal year nine, ten, and public hearings. Number eight, award of chlorine gas, sulfur dioxide gas, liquid sodium hydro, hypochloride, liquid ferric chloride, liquid sodium hydroxide, liquid cationic polymer, and carbon dioxide chemical bids. And number nine, which was pulled for discussion, Central Galt interchange consulting contract amendment number seven.
Okay. Thank you. First item. I'll move on to order. Number seven.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this item was pulled for a minor correction. This concerns the landscaping lighting districts. If you turn in your, your, the engineer report for district number three, we found out late this afternoon that the actual assessment is thirty-one cents lower than what was prepared in the engineer's report. This is actually based on an error that was made last year. And so we have to carry that thirty-one cent, uh, change forward. So the actual assessment that was shown in the engineer's report originally as two hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety-four cents per lot is actually two hundred and seventy-one dollars and sixty-three cents per lot, per household. That makes a seventy-one dollar change, the negative, throughout the document. I provided you a copy of Redline, uh, had the correct tables, I wanted to correct it for the record. This will be coming back at the July seventh meeting relative to the public hearing. It's a very minor correction, we wanna get the right numbers before you tonight.
Any questions from council?
Move to approve staff recommendation.
Moved and seconded, no further discussion. Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Next item pulled was number nine. Hi, Barbara?
Well, as a matter of fact, um, I would mention this, um, to Mr. Slaughterback. Uh, oftentimes, council members, uh, do have questions, and they meet with staff just as you did with Mr. Halliday. So sometimes we have the answers, and we should maybe be more careful about sharing them with the public so that you have, uh, the benefit of, of the homework that we did. Which is one of the reasons I pulled this particular item. Um, as we hear every, every day about cities and budget problems and people being, uh, laid off, um, I think we have to be very, um, careful about approving, um, additional monies without the public understanding why it's really necessary. So I would like to kind of review these, Greg. Um, and I had specifically a couple of things, but I would be happy for you to review any of it that you feel would be beneficial to the public, um, as little or as much as you would like to. Uh, but let me tell you the ones that, um, I'm wondering why it seems like some of these things should have maybe been covered in the initial bid. Uh, it seems like an afterthought that should have been covered, like the trees, uh, dense tree removal. It seems like perhaps maybe we should have, um, thought about that in the beginning so we wouldn't have this change order. But I'm sure you're gonna come up with a good answer for that. Um, and let's see, some of the other things, adding the safety shaped barriers. It seemed like, you know, it's just take measure out and see where everything's gonna end up, and we could have foreseen that. But I'm gonna just, if you don't mind, let you go over this, um, so that we understand exactly why it's necessary.
Okay, I'd be happy to. Uh, just for the audience, back in two thousand and seven, council awarded the construction or the design contract Omni Means for the final phase PSNE of the Central Galt Interchange. This is a two-point-six million dollar contract for the Phase Two services. It's important to remind council at that point in time, there was no contingency. We did not pre-approve anything for what comes later, changes made by Caltrans, things that came up during the construction. We worked with Omni Means over several months to try to look in our crystal ball and figure out everything that had ever been required on any past project they've done. But some things just come up during the course of these projects. You have Caltrans that's changing their design standards, changing from US, units to metric. You've got utility... You've got utility companies that you're anticipating what the utilities are going to do, but you don't know that until you get that far along. During the course of the project, Omni Means has done their work on the plans, they're about ninety-five percent complete, looking at getting those back into Caltrans in July for the final submittal. We're well along in the way relative to right-of-way acquisitions. As these things have progressed, they've had discussions with staff about things that have come up as far as extra work that has come, that have not been in the scope. At least within the scope, we have a very good idea of what is or isn't in there. If some of these items had been in the original scope, the price would not have been two point six million dollars, it would have been two point eight five million dollars. So we could have put everything we could think possibly happened, that would have raised the initial price. We decided to go through with a good clear scope that said, this is what's there, so we agreed whether it was or it wasn't as best we could, then we addressed things as they came up, knowing that it was or was not an extra. Omni Means has worked with staff. We were tracking changes early on in the project relative to potential cost savings that we have against other items. At this point in time, we have about forty thousand dollars in potential savings from work that they're still doing that could be applied against some of these, but we don't know that. We're coming to the very tail end. We didn't want to have the hole get any deeper in terms of the request for additional work. There are fourteen items that Omni Means has identified that they have left out for additional compensation. I have a list here of twenty-three items, just as complex, that they have incorporated into the plans and specs throughout the project, which there is no additional charge. They weren't able to do that without charge or incorporating savings from other portions of the project. My staff has gone through the fourteen items, and of those, seven are identified as being critical to move the project forward. Those are identified in your staff report by the bold text. There are also another seven for work that we've not quite yet negotiated what the final fee was, what the value of the project was. Overall, this additional two point four, twenty, one hundred and forty thousand dollars brings about six point four million dollars worth of benefit to the project, either through reduction in cost savings or in reduced time for construction. In terms of some of the specific items, like additional PDT meetings, S MUD has been very non-responsive to requests for information. Their delay in the project has delayed the project five months, in terms of the design, in terms of their portion of the work. We've had to have more progress meetings. That's obviously not the consultant's fault, not the city's fault. We can't do much to make up that time, there isn't, and that could not have been accounted for, we thought was a reasonable schedule, given with S MUD early on, and that just took longer.
Greg, was S MUD difficult in respect to that, to the meetings?
I think that they've just been busy at doing other projects, and maybe that was high on their priority list. I know that Omni Means and Ron Borland and Marty Inoue are here tonight, maybe they can talk to you directly about some of their experiences, but Ron told me he's one of his welcome out at S MUD. So I think they've been very persistent in trying to move things ahead. Now, we've tried some of our other inroads with them to get them moving, just a matter of our priorities, I think, aren't really their priorities.
I know we've had visits from S MUD Board and people with S MUD, and so we do have some connections if you felt like...
We tried using some of those as well. In terms of some of the particular items, I don't want to go through every single one here, but issues like the early tree removal. Almost no project starts out with doing that as a separate item. Projects of this size, when you go through Caltrans, go through a separate value analysis, where you get people that aren't involved in the everyday project. They come in from Caltrans to the city, we had a construction manager come in to assist the city, and they look at it with a fresh pair of eyes, and they say, here's the way we can do things better, something else that maybe somebody else didn't think of. One of the things that came out of that value analysis was the potential for delay because of the Swinton Hawk. It depends exactly on when you're going to do your work, whether there are or not Swinton Hawks. When we started the whole project, we didn't know what the potency was for the Swinton Hawks to be here. Now we're realizing, if the one hawk moves back in, we delay the whole project a year. So if it's work we're going to do ahead of time, the cost to do that separate plan, there's some benefits toward doing the tree removal early. That was not even considered at the time. If we had wanted at the beginning to include that as a separate plan set, the cost would have been exactly the same.
I guess that was one of them, it seems like we knew that we were going to remove the trees anyway, and that would have been included in the cost, whether we did it early or late, it seemed like it would have been the same.
The cost here is not for the removal of the trees, that's going to be about a million dollars. The cost here is to prepare a separate set of plans and specifications, process it through Caltrans, get a separate encroachment permit, and do it as a separate project in advance of the rest of it. It also means going back and taking the plans that show all the trees and deleting all the trees, so they'll be gone at that point in time. So that's what the majority of these comments are, it's issues that maybe we, if we had a better crystal ball, we could have projected ahead. Caltrans changed some of their standard wall details. They went back from metric to English, and English to metric, right in the middle of the project. We had no control over that. It's Caltrans, you want it done, you're going to do it their way. So that mean, and it wasn't just a matter of, we measure it in metric versus, you measure it in inches. When they changed the metric, then they round off, and you have to go even wall metric units. So all the angle points, because these are prefab walls, you have to change all the details on the drawings, so they match up. And it's very labor intensive to go back and make the changes. We didn't have the guardrails, they weren't a requirement. Caltrans came back late, I think it was third plan check, and they said, oh, by the way, now he wants you to add all these. They weren't included early on.
Sometimes it doesn't seem like we're being treated fairly with these requests after we get into the project.
All of these, all of these issues that were done had value to the project, either through money, savings, either through safety, or through schedule. Like I said, all in all, we're looking at over six million dollar savings. Some of them save us right of way. We have to do some additional storm drain designs, additional environmental work on the Beakman property, but we're saving over four hundred thousand dollars in construction costs. The initial plan early on was to put in an open drain, a ditch, now we're putting a pipe in. I guess if we were better, force years, we could have said, hey, this is the way it should go. Early plans, the environmental, at that point in time, we thought something else was better. We also had a lot of utilities that, when you start digging them up and potholing, they move around in the ground. You think they're here, they're over here, that results in some of the walls being changed. So we've looked at it. There are some things, that there are seven here that we've not yet fully negotiated or resolved, whether they maybe should have been in their scope of work, or continue with working with Omni Means to negotiate some of those as well.
Okay. Well, you can see why I felt like maybe it's important to explain this one a little bit. And bottom line, I think what I'm hearing you say is, even though we're spending more money, we are actually saving money, if you look at the bottom line.
That's correct. The changes to date that we're recommending approval of at this time, it is a lot of money, it's a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, that's five percent of the original design for this type of work that is very low for the design. And I think to credit Omni Means and their experience in working out all of these changes. A lot of this work has also not been done yet, includes work for utility companies. We're going to try to recoup some of this. We're looking at putting conduits across the A Street Bridge, all utilities can just go through the bridge rather than having to jack under the freeway, maybe saving them two million dollars. If we work this out, we're going to try to get them to pay for that design work, that they're going to benefit from it.
Did they have anything, I see they, they're here tonight, did they have anything they wanted to add to this topic?
They might. They're here more just in case council had something to ask them, but I'd be happy to offer them the opportunity.
Greg, okay. Well, I appreciate what you've done so far, as far as helping us save some money. I think it was important that the public got an explanation, and thank you for your time in coming down here. And with that, I would move to approve this.
We have a couple of questions. Go ahead, Daryl.
Back to the S MUD issue, I would recommend that we get our S MUD representative, get a list of things that, wherever still isn't moving, I just believe that will lubricate the process. And the mayor, whoever staff wants in that meeting, but I would have the person physically come here, invite her here, show her the overpass, show her the plans, and then have a list of, if you could help, we've just seen it time and time again, staff moves at one rate, and sometimes staff moves at a different rate, when their board member calls them and says, why have they waited six weeks for whatever this is? So just a thought. Second, I'd suggest you buy a couple bird feeders, that Swinton Hawks might feed somewhere else around, away from this project. And thirdly, I will say that, as council knows, I had concerns about the aesthetics we added about a million dollars to this project, for my fear of if other things have cost overrun. So not saying what you're proposing tonight is going to end up in that area, but as we move into additional fundings, I still have concerns. My core is that we get an overpass done that is functional, if it can end up being pretty on top of it, that's fine, but my core is that for these design issues and construction issues, that that's where the money goes first, and then after everything else is done, then aesthetics. And I'm not, you know, you don't even need to respond to that comment, it's just a reminder that that is my concern the night we voted on the aesthetics, and it continues to be. And I just want to keep focused on that. So thanks for you and the three behind you, all that you're doing to keep moving this project forward. But I definitely would get that S MUD representative out here physically, and I think it would help the process.
Andrew, go ahead.
Greg, I have a question. There's a statement in the staff report that the majority of these seven tasks are to be performed by subconsultants. Can you explain what the benefit is in using Omni Means to select those subconsultants instead of the city trying to negotiate with them directly?
The overriding benefit is just a coordination. The reason for putting it on the staff report is to let council know, this is not Omni Means coming back for themselves, trying to deepen their own pockets. It is, they have several subs, the majority of this money is from the structural sub. There's a lot of coordination between the structural sub, the electrical sub, the civil sub, where if we had different contracts with different subconsultants, they'd all be working at different schedules, nobody responsible for delay from one, the impact upon the others. By working them through a prime consultant such as Omni Means, then they're responsible for the delivery of the subs, the quality and caliber of the design, and the coordination between all the various subs. So if they've designed a storm drain, and somebody else has got a streetlight right there, we just look to Omni Means and say, work it out, otherwise it would be the city's problem.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? If not, is there a motion on the floor for item number seven, nine?
I did move that for approval.
I'll second it.
No further discussion, call for the vote.
Aye.
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 And we have several in remainder.
I'd like to move the remainder of the consent calendar.
Motion's been made.
Second.
And seconded. Any further discussion? None. Thank you. Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Next item we have is presentation.
McFarland Ranch Annual Report.
Want to make sure my chair wasn't...
And in the interest of time, I talked to the McFarland committee, and we're going to run the, not dim the lights, run the PowerPoint at the same time they're talking, because there are quite a few pictures, and then if you want to go back and ask about a slide or something, we can take you back.
First of all, we'd just like to say thank you. And then, we're trying to fulfill a promise here. Our promise to you was that if you gave us the funds each year, that each year, we would report to you what we did with them, and you'd get a chance to see what we've accomplished. And so the pictures behind me here, which are much better for you to see. By the way, that's five genera, oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Still a little confusing. I'm confused.
No, that's why we did that, so you'd have to...
As you look at the pictures, you're going to see a lot of youngsters, young people enjoying McFarland, and they're enjoying it thanks to you and what we have been able to accomplish. When we started this whole project ten years ago, we had no idea we would be bringing out so many young people from our community and the surrounding areas to enjoy this wonderful, wonderful place. If you go out there, you immediately get the fever that you want to be a part of it, that you want to be involved. We now have the Boy Scouts coming out there, in fact, they were not, just about two weeks ago, they were out there for an overnighter. And we have the Girl Scouts coming out, we have schools coming regularly, and for that, I would like to let Ida De Nier tell you a little bit about our youngsters and what they're experiencing.
Thank you. The youngsters that come out, the kindergarteners through the first graders, they come in the fall and they experience a hayride, and get to pick a pumpkin, and enjoy all the Halloween activities. The ones that come out in April through June are third and fourth graders who relive the times of John McFarland, where they make their own candles, they do basket weaving, they do corn husk dolls, lots of things that the children have no idea of what they past pioneers did. In the month of April through December, we have between three thousand and five thousand children that come through McFarland Ranch.
This is a perfect example, when they're able to see wool from the sheep all the way to the sweater, and to see the spinning wheel, and how it works, and how it creates the yarn. These are all things that young people don't have. I'm reminded of a very interesting ad that I saw in a magazine, where they were talking about a dozen eggs, and the father was talking to the child, and he said, where do you think these came from? And the boy said, the store. And the ending line was, and so what more could the father say? Ah, what about the chicken? So if we don't give these youngsters this opportunity to get to know where their food comes from, we're missing a bet. And folks, we've got the golden opportunity at McFarland. You have invested in probably one of the most wonderful places for our children. I invite you all to come out at kite day, for example. I don't fly kites, I just sit there and watch adults try, and a whole lot of youngsters have a wonderful time flying kites, like this little girl who's flying a kite eventually. You recognize Ron, our wonderful director, who has moved us slowly, carefully, and well through the process of restoring seven out of the eight buildings that have to be restored. The seventh building, which is almost complete, is the house. And we are all finished on the outside. We recently got a grant to put in the lift for the handicaps, so we're very excited about that, because now we can go ahead and order it. And as you can see, we also have weddings. We're just having so many wonderful opportunities out there for adults as well as for children. It's the most wonderful place that we could possibly imagine for people to go to learn the history of our area, to learn the history of Sacramento Valley, and especially agricultural history. That was our blood. Agricultural history is what made Galt what it was, and this is bringing it back so that people can see it. It's just an absolutely wonderful place. And we have you folks and some other very wonderful people who have been kind enough to give us the funding that's taken us to where we are. We have taken ten years to get to this point, and the reason we have is that the Galt Area Historical Society has a fiscal rule, you don't move till you have the money, or at least the assurance of it. For example, a grant that's going to come in, or something of that nature. So we have had to move as we had the money to do. As I said, we had the hole made in the porch for the lift, but we couldn't put the lift in till we had the money. We now have it, it was given to us specifically for that, and we now have that coming into place. We have the rest of the house to complete, and that means things like paint and wallpaper and so on, and you're seeing some of the interior, the two wonderful fireplaces. And if you've been there when it was still pretty raunchy and yucky looking, you will appreciate now, as you go through it, when you see things like the beautiful transom and all the wonderful work. This work, see this work? This beautiful... this work? This beautiful woodwork, that was all done by a retired dentist, former Galt High School student who came and said, "What can I do to help?" Discovered that this was something that was needed and has done it. We have so many people to thank for all they have done. And once again, I'm here, of course, to ask for the fifth year's, uh, funding and I'm hoping that we can continue in the same way, working as a team, to give Galt this beautiful gift. Um, while I'm on the subject, I sent you in May a letter about the heritage area. And today, as I was working on grants, I thought, oh, if only I had a letter from city council. They were asking in this particular grant, what was the, uh, support that I could expect from our community leaders. Let me explain what the heritage grant means. It doesn't cost you anything. Isn't that nice? So rare these days. And it's not an annexation and it's nothing of that sort. It just merely says that in the eyes of the leaders of our community, the McFarland Ranch is a heritage jewel that they want to protect. So, they are dubbing it a heritage area, just as you did landscapes, or not landscapes, um, landmarks. We've done four church landmarks. Same thing with this. This doesn't even have to be, have a plaque. It's just a question of a statement or a, a proposal, not even a proposal. Uh, I don't know how you do this legally as a, as a city council, but a statement that says the city council supports the idea of creating the McFarland Ranch a heritage area for the city of Galt. This is what the, um, folks at the national level have suggested that communities do. They said, "Look around you and those areas that seem to be historically significant, then create what you call a heritage area." And that's what it's about. Are there any questions about this?
No, I just have a couple of comments. I'm hoping that we can continue to support.
I'm going to ask another big favor tonight and that is probably not going to be resolved this evening, but I'm going to ask you all to think about this very seriously. This will be the fifth year that you have given us the $10,000 to help us. And believe me, that has been so wonderful. I would like to ask for another extension of five more years with each year having with it the same proviso that we must come to you and we must show you that we are moving forward. At the point that we, that you feel we're not doing the job, you have every right to pull, pull out. But we'd like to have you on as joint partners in this terrific project for Galt. And I thank you all very, very much on behalf of all of us, all 527 members.
Thank you, Jeannie.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, I'm hoping that, uh, we can continue to support the project and that council would, you know, bring back something, uh, to, maybe we can agendize this because we'll have to actually officially vote on it to, to determine whether we can support it. It is a, I think we're all members and, uh, we, we go to all the functions. And I like the idea. I know, Jeannie, you had talked to me about, uh, the area, is that a historical heritage? Is that what that is? That we support the McFarland Ranch?
Yeah.
As a her- a her- heritage area? Yeah. And I would further move that maybe council, we could get together, uh, put a letter together and not just one council member, that maybe all of us could sign something.
I like that idea. Can I go a step further with that?
Sure, please.
I'd like to get something, maybe perhaps if we could get a nice, something and a nice plaque for them that they can place out there so that they can show that our support. When people walk out there, they know that, you know, that the, the city council members of this community, leaders of this community, support them wholeheartedly. And I think it'd be nice to have it all signed by each member and in a nice plaque or something.
Right, yeah.
A case or whatever it is, something nice, something to be fitting for the, uh, for the McFarland Ranch and place it out there. That, I would like to see that. You guys do such excellent work and you do, uh, I'm just so impressed by the limited amount of funds that you take and you stretch it so far. Every time I go out there, I'm, I, you know, I, I think about how much I spend in my own yard, uh, my own house to paint it, you know, to landscape it. And you guys take very limited funds and stretch it so far. I mean, you could do, uh, so much with so little. I am always so impressed and you guys do such fabulous work. And I don't know where you guys get the volunteers, but, uh, I'd like to get them volunteered over at my house. They are excellent, absolutely outstanding. All three of you, I congratulate all three of you. And I, I'm a lifetime member of the Historical Society. And then anybody out there who's not a member, I highly recommend you join. I think it's absolutely wonderful. And, um, I, you know, it's the one group that I, I always enjoy them coming back every year because they've always got something positive to say and you always can, you know, they'll share with you everything that they've accomplished. And I think it's just overwhelmingly, uh, wonderful and it's refreshing. So, I, I thank you for coming tonight with your presentation. And I support your, uh, recommend, requests, by the way.
I was going to let you go ahead and finish.
No, I was going to say that when I first moved to town in, uh, 1990, I met Jeannie, I think at the Marvell Grocery Store and, uh, joined the first year and was so impressed with what you, you know, you guys are trying to do that, uh, my family and I became lifetime members. And, uh, I want to thank you for, uh, you know, not that you twisted my arm or anything, uh, but, uh, just to see, uh, the historical living and the opportunity not only as us as adults that saw, you know, remember the way it was, but for the advantage of these children that do not get to see a lot of that. So, gee, I hope everyone continues the work. Thank you. Any other comments by council?
Again, thanks for all you do and your continued support. And, uh, Ida, if you need to raise any extra funds out there, just make a few more items and let me know.
So, we're going to have an extension for this and a letter.
For, uh, can we do that?
And one for the plaque.
Well, we, well, when will we be, when will we be able to do that? I mean, you know, timeframe, that's what I was just looking at.
It actually doesn't expire, I think, till next year.
Right.
So, we'll bring it back as soon as we can, you know.
The next two, meeting or two, probably.
On the issue of the plaque, can you contact with Ida and, um, the Historical Society and Jeannie and to, uh, uh, show them the potential designs or something nice that they would like that's fitting for the McFarland Ranch? So, that I'd like to have their buy off on it, if you don't mind.
Chief Davenport, city hall, um, I have a request to the city council tonight, move forward with the resolution recognizing them as the Heritage Society so they can get that going on that end. Because they just need, need the city to recognize this. You guys have already given the grant money. They're still going forward. If they have an official resolution, it's from the next meeting or something, they can go forward with what they need to do to get the extra money.
We can do it at the next meeting, but legally, we, we just can't vote on a resolution tonight that's not agendized. So.
Thank you. I'm glad to know that everyone else out there feels the same way. Yeah. Okay. All right. Uh, next item we have is communications.
Question, question.
I'm sorry.
Could somebody explain what the heritage area is and what it does or what it's supposed to do?
We've, we've got some information we can get to you.
We have a letter that I know that when we got one, I. Yeah, I'm sorry Ted. I, I got a copy and then it went to council and I thought one went to you and Jason. If it did not, I apologize. Okay. Yeah, we'll make sure you get a copy of it. Oh, okay. Jeannie has one. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. No other comments? We'll move to next item is communications.
Thank you. Something I wanted to keep the council aware of, um, we got our second report from the National League of Cities on our prescription discount card program. We, we still have numbers stronger than the city of Rancho Cordova, which is pretty amazing since they're roughly three times the size of the city of Galt. Currently, of the participants that we have in the program, 78.6% of the prescriptions that they purchase are covered by the plan. There's an average price savings of $17.33, which is a 20.9% savings on every prescription that they purchase. That turned out pretty good. The other thing, and I, I brought this up a little when the South County Services was here, the Sacramento Bee today ran an article about the 20 local economies hit hardest by the economic downturn. And Galt, out of all the cities in Northern California, came in at number 13. And the numbers look pretty grim. Our labor force in the city of Galt sits at 10,883. Our unemployed in the city of Galt is 1,683. In the last year, our unemployment rate has gone up by 74%. The unemployment rate right now in the city of Galt is 15.3%. Uh, just a note that they added, where like several other places, Galt's labor force grew even as jobs disappeared during the last fiscal year. So, it just, it, it really seems like, uh, some of the foreclosures and the bad times that we've seen could possibly get worse in the next 12 months. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. We'll move on to scheduled matters, ordinances. Our city attorney.
First item that we have tonight, first ordinance, is a proposed ordinance demanding chapter 8.16, chapter 15.04 and chapter 14.04, the municipal code pertaining to security deposit requirements for garbage, water and sewer utilities. And this ordinance is a follow-up at a, from a council meeting in April 2009 where staff recommended and council agreed that there was a need for more flexibility as it relates to security deposit requirements as it pertains to, um, utility services that we provide, garbage, water and sewer utilities. So, what this ordinance does is it does provide flexibility for the finance department, uh, to make a determination in certain cases where there is extreme financial hardship, that the security deposit requirement can in fact be waived or, or reduced. Uh, this ordinance, uh, provides that flexibility as it relates to, uh, garbage, sewer and water service. So, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to, to answer those questions. And this ordinance is presented tonight for introduction, uh, and wa- waiver of first reading and will be continued to the next meeting for adoption.
Are there any comments from council?
No, it allows them to, uh, either have it waived, reduced, but it also, uh, will allow them to, uh, extend out the time that they could pay for deposit as well, right?
Um, well, it makes, it makes a security deposit. It's not mandatory. It's that the, uh, security deposit may be required and then it provides that the requirement may be waived or reduced upon a finding of, uh, extreme financial hardship by the finance department.
Okay, but they have the flexibility that if you're in a little bit of a gray area that somebody who's unable to pay it perhaps, not necessarily you won't waive it, but you may reduce it, but it also allow them to pay that in a extended period of time.
That's right.
Any other comments? I would then entertain a motion. Oh.
I might see if there was any public comment on this, um, item first.
It's, okay, I think Al Baldwin is moving forward.
You know, I probably didn't, Al Baldwin. I, I'm, uh, maybe I didn't understand it totally, but maybe I did. Would it be legal for, say, the garbage company to give a discount for low income or maybe, well, most seniors have low income and be able to do that without having any backlash of any kind?
No, we've done this before. In order for the council to do that, you'd have to take some money from some other source to make a hold in order to do that.
Well, I just wondered if they were independent and they could do that, maybe.
That's something different. This is for the finance so that there's a deposit or they can make a later payment or they can waive part of that in order to help them.
Well, I keep trying.
It's a good question, Al. I've asked a couple of times already.
We keep trying, you know, any, any little thing there, I'll come out and hit it. But thank you very much.
You have been consistent.
I have been, I have been consistent. I've been in and consistent. Yes.
Is there any other public comments at this time? Then I would entertain a motion.
I'll second.
Need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I was expecting to hear Randy. Uh, I'll make a motion. We accept the, uh, ordinance. Um, chapter, what's this? I'm sorry. Make sure I get the right one here. On the proposed ordinance demanding chapter 8.16 and chapter 13.0, et cetera.
Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Barbara.
Five zero.
Number two. Subject number two.
Okay, the, uh, the next item before you is a proposed ordinance demanding title 21 of the municipal code entitled Code Enforcement to Clarify Certain Enforcement Procedures. And this is brought to you as a request from the district attorney's office. There's a provision currently in the city's municipal code that provides that, uh, in situations where the city is prosecuting violations of misdemeanor or infractions, that the, you know, city attorney has a discretion to determine whether or not to the, uh, the act would be prosecuted as a misdemeanor or infraction. And the, uh, the district attorney correctly pointed out that most of the, uh, most of the prosecutions are in fact handled by the district attorney's office and they felt that it was inefficient to have that discretion lodged with the city attorney and that it would be more appropriate for whoever was enforcing the city's, uh, code to have that, uh, that discretion. So, what we've done is we've just changed that language to say at the discretion of the enforcement officer, so that in a situation where the district attorney is in fact the enforcement officer, uh, prosecuting a violation of one of our ordinances, that they have the determin- the determination as to whether or not this is a, uh, the violation is prosecuted as a misdemeanor or an infraction. So, that's, that's the extent of the change in this, uh, in this particular ordinance. I'd be happy to respond to any questions. And again, it's presented for introduction and waiver of first reading.
Uh, originally, Ted, help me remember, did we, um, come up with a plan when, um, the previous attorney was here that this was supposed to help our code enforcement? Supposed to make it, um, move faster because of the backlog with the city attorney?
No, you know, what the, what the issue is, is that we need to clarify exactly what the, uh, uh, violation is and not allow them to do it so that they can make the determination. And so, what we've done is said, the code enforcement person will mark and that will be what the violation is and it will be clear as to whether it's, uh, Sacramento County or someone else that's going to enforce it. So, we're, it's a clarification so that somebody doesn't have to make a judgment.
So, then the, uh, code enforcement officer would decide if it was, or make a recommendation that was a violation and then it would go to the district attorney?
And they, they would identify the type of violation.
Okay.
The issue before was that the county was uncertain as to which violation they wanted to prosecute under. So, this will clarify what that is.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
If there aren't, I'll move staff's recommendation.
Anything to ask?
Correct, ma'am. And we just ask if there's any public comment on this item.
Okay. Was there any public comment on this item? Yes, none? No, is there a motion?
Still move.
Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion? None. Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye, aye. Number three.
Okay, the last item, uh, tonight is proposed ordinance repealing chapter 10.50 of the municipal code entitled Trip Reduction Program. Uh, the Trip Reduction Program ordinance was adopted by the city back in 1992. And there was a provision added in the Health and Safety Code, state law, uh, in 1995 that, um, provided that mandatory trip reduction programs are no longer lawful. And, um, we neglected to, uh, to change the law back. And we neglected to change the law back in nineteen ninety-five and we just noticed this when we were doing some other cleanup. And so the purpose of this ordinance is to repeal chapter ten point five in order to bring us into conformity with state law. Now, the repeal of this mandatory requirement does not prevent any of the local employers from instituting voluntary trip reduction programs, but it would not, no longer allow the city to mandate trip production programs for your local employment, or local employers. Again, it's the ordinance is presented for introduction and waiver of first reading, I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Comments from council? Any public comment? None, is there a motion?
I'll move, we accept the recommendation.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded, no further comments or discussion, call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Five oh.
Thank you.
Right, thank you. Ms. Riddell, thank you. Director Calender, Parks and Recreation Department.
Yes, good evening. If council recalls, the city has contributed twenty-five thousand dollars, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars to SAC County to help offset the costs of the senior nutrition lunch program. Parks and Rec staff was notified by the county that in their proposed budget cuts that part-time employees will be the first to go on the chopping block. With that being said, I spoke with Ms. Janine Brown and the proposal for you this evening is, of the twenty-five thousand dollars that we contribute, we would retain approximately fourteen thousand, fifteen thousand of that monies to hire the site coordinator individual there at Chabola Center. And if some of you have been by the program recently, it's really taken off. I've seen participation probably increase fifty to seventy-five percent. With that being said, is that it's not going to cost the city any more additional monies. It would be very light supervision, she's been here for approximately three months in the operation of the nutrition lunch program. She would no longer have to travel to Sacramento to pick up the meals. The meals would be delivered here on-site, she'd work approximately three and a half hours per day. So in essence, I think in the best interest to continue the program for our seniors of the community that council approves of this agreement this evening.
Comments from council?
I have one.
One comment?
Um, boys, under the contract for services, item, I guess that's I, no, it's one, scope of services. It says county shall provide supervision equipment and supplies for all reports and carryout activities. I guess then they're saying the city would have no supervision over this person?
No, she would, the individual would be an employee of Parks and Recreation Department, but some of the paperwork that is required would be submitted to the county.
Okay. I would also add that I haven't observed what a great job this person is doing and I don't know that any other person would do as wonderful as she is, but she's certainly a big asset to the program and has brought in some people that have really benefited from this, so hopefully it'll go through.
Okay, any other questions, comments, if there are any, are not any, and do we have a motion?
I move the recommendation of the staff.
Motion's been made and seconded, no other comments or discussion, call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Five oh, very good. Thank you, boys. We will adjourn to the redevelopment agency, and the roll call, please.
Board members, Payne here, Claire.
Here.
Payne.
Here.
Meredith.
Here.
Shelton.
Here.
Public comment?
I have no speaker sheet.
Okay. Information consent agenda, if you would read those off, please.
Number one, approval of the minutes of the meeting of June second and June eighth. Number two, approval of the redevelopment agency warrants. And number three, approval of the treasurer's report for the period ending April two thousand and nine.
Is there any further comments or questions, none, motion, is there a motion on the floor?
So moved, second.
Motion's been made and double seconded, we'll call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Adjourn and reconvene to the Galt City Council, city clerk's report?
Just a couple of reminders. Um, June eighteenth, the edification committee will be meeting at three-thirty in the city hall community room. On June twenty-fifth, the commission on aging will meet at five fifteen in the California Room over at Parks and Recreation. On July third, the city offices will be closed to celebrate Fourth of July, which takes us, let's see, June lie six, there's a city council youth committee meeting at six P.M. in the city hall community room, and that takes us to our next meeting on July seventh.
Comments by staff?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would just like to point out to the council, if they haven't seen the reports from Parks and Rec or from the market, the last three or four weeks, we've had the best three or four weeks we've had in several years. Matter of fact, I could hear people moaning today because of the traffic problems that we used to have, moaning every week. And I think if you look at the statistics, that the market's doing quite well and we're really happy with that. The other thing is, I'm really happy that Greg's standing on top of his projects and that the voice is a matter, you know, bouncing around with what he needs to do to keep the cook, and I'm thankful for Jason, the budget process. The thing I'm trying to say is, and for Kurt and everything and everybody else, but this city is very fortunate to have the type of people that they have. And I think it is indicative of the budget process to show us exactly how well we are, and I feel fortunate. I feel bad that for some of the other cities and that, but I feel fortunate for this city that we're not experiencing to the magnitude as to what some of the other people are, and I feel very, very lucky. I'd just like to make that comment, thanks.
I agree with you, thank you Ted.
I would just like to add that, again, Saturday night, fireworks, July fourth, it'll be a great show. And why, you don't have to give me an answer this evening, but the parade will be on Sunday evening, July fifth, starting approximately at nine P.M. It'll start at the high school like it did last year, go down A Street to fourth, back up to P. So if you want to participate, let me know, okay? Again, not this evening, just in the next week or so. All righty?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments from staff? Council members, Vice Mayor Payne.
I just want to comment and commend our code enforcement, police department, fire department in the task force action they took recently to help a part of our town that really needed some attention. They all worked together and did a terrific job. I think we all got copies of the report and it was obvious that they were badly needed in that area of town. So great job to all of you, I want to say that again from the bottom of my heart. I did attend the FPA meeting, I'm not going to report on that because Greg Holliday did an excellent job last time we were together, whenever that was, budget or something. I would also mention that the committee is moving forward, working on the youth master plan. Currently, we're looking at what other cities have already done so that we can benefit from their experience. Just encourage everyone to come out to the farmer's market. The manager has got a commitment from all of the vendors that they will be there for the full season, so let's come out and support it. Thank you very much.
Were you going to report on the interviews?
I wasn't, not tonight, not until you've done your official sample of approval.
Okay.
A couple items, one, again, thank you to Congressman Lundgren and his staff, Pete Eviich and his organization represent us in Washington, D.C. We've been reporting to you that we've made appropriation requests. One of our requests has moved forward and has come out of the committee process, still has a recommendation and still has the ways to go, and we'll be working on that, but they've done a lot of work back there and to our staff for supporting the work they're doing. Um, we'll be having a SACOG board meeting tomorrow, but I mentioned in our budget meeting that SACOG has now formed a subcommittee of myself and one other member. I've been mentioning for some while pushing to get a rail, or commuter rail, to use the line that's existing in our town already. So they have formed the subcommittee, I had first meeting of that subcommittee. We had the, all the staff members of SACOG who would be relative to that type of work. We had the executive director from the regional transit there. We had the executive director of the Sam Lakeen Council of Governments. We had the executive director of the Sacramento Council of Governments, because they'd both be involved. We had representative from the Capitol Corridor's train which runs from Sacramento to the Bay Area and representatives from the ACE Train Organization that runs from Stockton to the Bay Area. But there's this gap in between where no trains run and we're trying to fill that in. So this will become a at least monthly committee that will work on this issue. So I thank SACOG for dedicating staff time to it. I informed the mayor, we'll be having a press conference briefing of the five mayors at least along the route, Sacramento, Elk Grove, Galt, Lowdy, Stockton. We'll probably invite Merced and Modesto's mayors as well to that event. So the mayors will first get a briefing and a small group from us working on the project and then there'll be a press conference after that that the press can ask or you folks can make statements to them. So we're trying to begin building some public awareness of what we're trying to get support for. Uh, we've also signed, one of the other committees I'm on, we have signed a memorandum of understanding with the High Speed Rail Commission and they now are a part of this project and they are seeking funding for some of the right-of-way we will need as well as track improvements. So we're very pleased with the progress. Uh, the upside would be something like this could be up and running in two to three years with the right support. The downside is projects like this could take ten or twenty years. So it's just, we're just going to keep fighting, see what'll happen, so we'll keep the abreast of it. But I forget how many years I've been working on this, but this is the most movement we've had in the last six years or so, so we're encouraged.
Councilmember Haynes?
Yeah, I want to thank again, as well, I want to thank Fire Department, Police Department Code Enforcement for the code enforcement task force that went out, did an outstanding job, excellent sweep in the area that needed it most. It happened to be one of the areas that I'd commented in the last council meeting that had the trees blocking the light, where by the way, getting those cut back. And one other thing I want to comment on, every meeting I'm commenting about our police reports, and I'm not sure how many people actually go out on our internet or on our website, our webpage, but this is what it looks like, this is a map of the city and the grids that are broken down and you really should go out and look at it so you understand what crimes are occurring in your area, what you should be looking out for. Now, this is June and I just, you know, as a heads up, when the weather gets warm during the summer, crimes tend to go up. Burglaries, car theft, vandalism, so I really recommend everybody keep your garage doors closed, ensure that your vehicles are locked up. Uh, one thing that I really highly recommend at night, leave your lights on. It's one of the easiest and best ways to deter crime. If you go down some of the blocks and you notice a lot of lights out, you probably can imagine, or you can almost be assured that there's got an increased risk of being the victim of these crimes. So please, put your lights on at night, it helps. And I'm hoping that as time goes on and more educated we get on these issues, that we'll, as citizens, do a better job and not give these criminals the opportunities, opportunities that they're seeking. That's all I have.
Okay, next is Andrew Meredith, Councilman Meredith.
Well, questions first, Greg, on the list served that we were going to send out on the quiet zones, did we get any responses yet?
Yes, I've gotten about a dozen, I will put those together tomorrow and inform them to council. Majority of them are, good luck, let us know how it turns out.
Let me hear, appreciate it though. And then Ted, did we get any feedback on our, on our requests on the Fourth Street properties that had fallen into disrepair?
I got a notice from Rusty that he'd accomplished the items from the two parcels. The fire department would not find the one, and then I got a neighbor called me and said, no, they didn't, so I got to go back and check and see what was done, but Rusty told me that they'd actually cleaned it up with weeds and overhanging stuff, so.
But the actual property that's still on the railroad tracks, no movement on that yet?
No, I think there was, I got to go back and check and he reported that it's been taken care of.
Okay.
Uh, we also understand that it changed hands and ownership.
Just recently?
Yeah. But I'll check the parcel.
My agenda item that I have on tonight is just a recap of the budget cuts that I proposed last Monday night at our budget hearing. Put this on the agenda so that the community would be able to see exactly what I was proposing. As many of you are aware, on Monday, June eighth, the city of Galt conducted a midterm budget review. At the meeting, I proposed over a hundred and seventy thousand dollars worth of cost-saving measures for the city. These proposals were presented to our department heads and the entire council through an emailed memo sent to the above listed recipients. I had the opportunity to discuss my proposal with several of our department heads prior to the meeting, seeking to explain why I thought it was necessary to propose cuts to executive salaries, council benefits, et cetera. I could have made my proposals on the fly at the meeting, but I thought it was important to give staff some warning about what I was proposing. I expected to be afforded the opportunity by council to present my proposals at the meeting and explain why I thought they were necessary for the city of Galt at this time. Instead, during the communications portion of the agenda, Councilman Daryl Clare read a prepared statement criticizing my decision to propose cuts. Councilman Clare took issue with the fact that my proposals were sent to staff in the form of a memo, citing it as the equivalent of dropping a bomb on staff. Despite the fact that Councilman Clare spoke with city staff about my memo as early as eight-thirty in the morning, he made the statement during the meeting that he didn't even get my memo or review it until midday. The statement was a complete fabrication. Councilman Clare also accused me of being a part of a secret pact to not do away with council member medical benefits. The statement was also a complete and utter fabrication. I approached Councilman Clare last year to discuss whether or not the benefits were something he could afford to do without. When he got back to me and explained the situation, I chose not to include the elimination of those benefits in a budget disaster plan that I was preparing. In fact, at the time, I put the whole disaster plan on hold to see if the economy would right itself in the next fiscal year. Never did I count, never did I promise Councilman Clare that I would refrain from bringing the proposal back should the economic situation in the city worsen or stay the same as it has. It seems that rarely Councilman Clare lets an opportunity to criticize me pass him by. This time, my reward for hours and hours of research and the presentation of a detailed plan to cut costs in the wake of a continued economic slump was a five-minute tongue-lashing. Councilman Clare even made the slanderous accusation that my memo may have disclosed confidential information. I took the opportunity last week to consult our city attorney about the memo. Per him, and if I'm incorrect in making this statement, he can correct me tonight, nothing in the memo disclosed confidential information. I was also disappointed in the fact that Councilman Clare thought my discussion of eliminating a position during our budget session was inappropriate. In my opinion, all decisions to eliminate positions or cut the budget at all should be handled in the light of public evaluation. I hope that in the future, my proposals to council will be met with less hostility. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I have one comment, I guess our next council meeting will actually be after the Fourth of July, it'll be July the seventh. So with that said, I hope that everyone has a fun and very safe Fourth of July. And we will adjourn at eight-thirty. Thank you.